When you call me, I will respond. When you call me, I will respond. When you call me, I will respond. You call me, I will respond. When you call me, I will respond. You call me, I will respond. When you call me, I will respond. You call me, I will respond. When you call me, I will respond. You call me, I will respond. When you call me, I will respond. You call me, I will respond. When you call me, I will respond. You call me, I will respond. When you call me, I will respond. You call me, I will respond. When you call me, I will respond. You call me, I will respond. When you call me, I will respond. You call me, I will respond. When you call me, I will respond. You call me, I will respond. When you call me, I-
Father, high priest, who does not understand? You give a life of abandon, but you're no stranger to death. So even in this moment, I know you see my heart. Although I'm really hurting, we do not grieve apart.
There is hope within this morning. You grieve with those who grieve, and you see what can't be seen. Oh, bless it all, the broken hearted. All you need is where we are. Oh, Jesus, comfort of my soul, I know you'll never-
I know you'll never fall. I know you'll never- Jesus, comfort of my soul, I know you'll never fall. I know you'll never fall. I know you'll never fall.
Jesus, comfort of my soul, I know you'll never fall. I know you'll never fall. I know you'll never fall. Jesus, comfort of my soul.
The ones are all too blue. From ashes there'll be beauty. The sun is breaking through. I know you're coming for me. You rolled the stone away from me. And now I stand in victory today. There is hope within this morning. You grieve with those who grieve, and you see what can't be seen. Bless it all, the broken hearted. All you need is where we are.
Jesus, comfort of my soul, I know you'll never fall.
There is hope within this morning. You grieve with those- Hello, how you doing? Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me okay? Testing, can anyone hear me?
Hello?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. We're waiting for a few more people to join on and we get ready for Bible study. Just want to make sure you guys can hear me okay. Thank you. Alright.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
No text, 18 cents.
Okay, Brother Chris is might be a little late this evening to join us. He's working a little late today. So he asked that I get things started so we can start the Bible study session shortly. We're gonna go ahead and start with the prayer. We're gonna start with a prayer to get things going. Evangelist Mona?
Yes.
Would you like to pray us in tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Father, in the name of Jesus, Lord, we just come before your presence right now. We thank you, oh God, for just keeping us all day long, Father. Thank you, Lord God, that we were in our right minds, Father. Thank you that we had the use of activities of our limbs. We just bless your name and we praise you because you are an awesome and a mighty God. And Father, we just come tonight, oh God, to hear your voice, oh God, through the book of the book of Proverbs. Father, and help us, oh God, to be reminded of what proverb is saying to us, Lord. Give us eyes to see, ears to hear. Regulate our minds, oh God, let the mind of Christ be in us. Right now, in the name of Jesus. Help us, God, not just to be a hearer of the word, but be a doer of the word. And we ask you to bless the teacher, Lord, help him, oh God, to bring out mysteries and revelation. Father God, through your word, that your people will be empowered, that your people will be changed. And we just thank you for all, in the mighty name of Jesus. Most of all, we thank you for the Holy Spirit that is here right now, teaching us, bringing us to another level. In Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen and amen.
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 Amen. Well, thank you for that beautiful prayer. As we normally start off with our services, our Bible study session, we were in Proverbs chapter 15, and we got to chapter 27 last week. Does anybody want to share as a recap anything that stuck out to them about the Bible study session? Or just give us some comments or things that, a revelation that come to you since that time? Or things that you experienced after the Bible study during our normal week? Have anyone like to share? Okay. Alright, well, you know, and chime in at any time. But as Proverbs is being this wisdom piece that really speaks to us on many different levels, but the message is the same of unearthing the power of God, the wisdom that's within us, how to use it, how we're supposed to have confidence in that word, but also know our relationship with God. Proverbs brings those things to light that so long ago, we might see these stories or similarities in the Bible back then in the Old Testament, but it's speaking to us today in what we're dealing with, which I think is so profound when we look at Proverbs in how we live today and how we should address things today. So we're gonna get into some of that again tonight, but I'm looking forward to how we all plug in to to make this message live to us, but also to really open up the meaning to all of us. I do want to share, your input is so important that it brings value to the richness of what we're receiving, how we dissect this. And so I really hope we continue that going in. And please, as we get started, share this with folks that you know who would really want to have a closer relationship with Christ in understanding how Proverbs gets them to that level. Please reach out and share with folks to join in on this session. You do have the text message for our Bible study session. So we ask that you each one, reach one in that instance. How about that?
Amen.
Alright. So we're gonna get started with this lesson. Let me get to a point here where I need to be. And we can start off with, I do want to just go over the last few. But let's start from 25 to read 27 before we jump into 28, because I want to keep the momentum going that we've, that we can see how all of this is relatable and how it builds on one another when we do that. Sometimes we can get into those and those who may not have been on last week might not know where we're dealing with, how, where to address the transition in the Word and how it builds upon our situations. Okay? So let's go ahead and start reading from Proverbs 15. If someone can read 25 through 27, please.
God smashes the pretensions of the arrogant. He stands with those who have no standing. God can't stand evil scheming, but he puts words of grace and beauty on display. A greedy and grasping person distorts community. Those who refuse to exploit live and let live. This is stuff at 27.
Yes. Yeah. So in that, I just want to show how, you know, it's speaking about where we are, when we are, and who we could be. It starts to define a person, and they're defined by their actions and by their works or lack of works. So when we see that, it's not, you know, it's not focused just on one particular area or group. It talks about, you know, the Lord tears down the house of the proud. So when you're talking about in that instance where people might feel that they've arrived somewhere, just that whole inference on how folks might move that they have made it and they've done it without God, and they move over people because they feel they made it. It just shows that no one's untouchable from God's reach.
Amen.
His blessings or his corrections.
That's alright.
So, you know, it really starts to say that because it says, "He sets the widow's boundary stones in place." The Lord detests the thoughts of the wicked. But gracious words appear in his sight. And you see how the blessings are given as well. But you can see where God detests some things. Because when you read words like detest, detest, that's not just, you know, I don't like it. That's something far more severe. And where, you know, it's kind of like, you know, get away from me. You know, you're not worthy of my presence and don't be around me. So when we see these things, we gotta also remember that those are relate, can be relatable to us in our actions. And Proverbs really brings that out to share and actually teach us of where we should be. So just wanted to give you some background or just remind us of where we were when we're going. And again, the severity of the wording that's being used. Because sometimes we might want to skip over those things to say, well, you know, this is, it's not that bad. I didn't do anything that terrible. Well, you see how the Lord places things, says things are wicked thoughts, and those aren't to his liking at all. So let's see if we can go and go on down. Can we read, can someone read verses 27 to, 27 through 29? Let's stop there.
A greedy man brings trouble to his family. But he who hates bribes will live. The heart of the righteous weigh in, weigh its answer. But the mouth of the wicked gushes evil. The Lord is far from the wicked, but he hears the prayer of the righteous.
So, so do we have any one who want to comment on those? What you gathering out of those statements? Those verses? You know, 27 does start talking about the gain and greed. If you notice the motive of individuals, as we say in this world, you know, we're a capitalistic, you know, state or country where capitalism is the growth factor, businesses of wealth. And doesn't mean that, you know, you're not able to make financial gains. It's the heart and the intent of your game and how you do it that's won't be the liking of God. And a lot of times, it's that drive or seeking that gain, whether it's financial, whether it's power to be leader, or whether it's power to gain influence over people, or just to be at a position where you are in control. Sometimes those thoughts or ways to get there are truly outside of God's will. And that means there's trouble all around you. And plus the actions that you take to get there really turns people away from you. And if we're supposed to be Christians in God's representatives, what are we sharing those, sharing to those or showing to those people that we step on? Or do wrong to get to that spot we're looking for? How is that godly? How is that showing our Father that we're taking his commands to heart? Anyone else like to share on that? So if not, let's move right into 28 where it says, like that one, "The heart of the righteous studies how to answer, but the mouth of the wicked pours forth fruit." Anyone want to tackle that one?
It says that we, the heart of the godly think carefully before speaking. The mouth of the wicked overflow with evil words. So we that are believers, we have to think before we speak. And you know, we can't say all kinds of things. We can't be carnal minded and say all kinds of things, you know? It's just, you have to be careful with words because words are alive, okay? And words go out and words begin to create. And when the creation come in your life, you wondering what's happening? But you spoke those words. So we have to be careful how we speak. We just can't say anything, you know? We have to speak the word of God and not speak what we think or what somebody else says. You know, we have to stick with the word because the word is true. A man will tell you a lie, but the word is true. So we have to be careful how we use words, even with one another. You know, we can't say anything to one another. We got to have that love for one another, you know? And have that person interest that heart. So we just can't come out of the mouth what we think, you know? And some people got bad mouths, you know? And they say that they're Christians, but they using bad language, you know? And that is not the character of Jesus Christ. And we have to really realize who we representing. We are representing the King. He's the King of kings and the Lord of lords. And we are his ambassadors and representatives of the kingdom of God. And we got to talk like he talk. You know, we got to do what he did. We can't have our own plan over here in our own way and say, yeah, well, I could say this and I could say that because I'm grown and I don't want nobody to tell me what to do. And you know, all of these carnal things. So you know, we have to have the mind of Christ. We got to have his mind. When we have his mind, we gonna talk like he talk. So we don't want to be, we don't want to have that mouth, you know, that is overflowing with evil words. And some people don't even, you know, they don't consider their words. They don't consider what they say. They hurt people feelings and not even think about it. You know, what you said. We got to speak like the Bible tell us to speak. And you know, we getting there. None of us is perfect. We are a work in progress, okay? And then the book of Proverbs is telling us how to do it. It's giving us instructions, okay? So we have to take those instructions and not just hear them, but we got to live by them. And we have to do them. The most important thing is to do. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you for that. Anyone else like to add? One thing I want to point out in that, and it says, you know, as we read that carefully, it says, "The heart of the righteous." You know, there's that identifying factor again, identifying who. You know, when we do these things, we are classified as, you know, the heart of the righteous.
Amen.
So in the commentary, I have, it says, "God's righteous ones, men and women of wisdom, think beforehand what they should and will say. Words are not based only on impulse and reaction."
Amen.
So that speaks volumes to the patience we're supposed to have when we're dealing with people in different situations. But also, it keeps us out of the second category, "But the mouth of the wicked pours forth evil." Because a lot of times, those reactions really might not mean what we say when we spill out like that, out of knee jerk reaction. But it goes back to that character, and you know, many people say it, you know, if you didn't really mean it, you wouldn't really said it.
Absolutely.
So there's gonna give some concern or caution to how you really feel about it or how you think about it when you respond to it. Sometimes you don't get a chance to say those words back.
That's right.
But again, we're still representing God. We're looking at who we want to be careful of in these verses. We want to follow the statement that goes behind, "Hearts of the righteous study how to answer." And that's just taking patience. That's just doing that, having a second thought or taking that time just to respond. Because sometimes an answer is not really needed for a situation. Words might not need to be said in a situation that is heated. Just, you know, some patience and time together might do that. in time together might do that.
Amen.
Anyone else like to share before we move to the next verse?
Um, Elder Bear's also in that, um, dealing with that situation, a lot of times when I'm dealing with young people. I would tell them about the brain, like we have the thinking brain and we have the feeling brain. And a lot of time they react on that feeling brain. And I would tell them that what they need to do is stop and pause and take a brief, deep breath before they speak, because a lot of times with that feeling brain, they say things that could hurt themselves or hurt somebody else. So I always tell them, you know, just to pause, take a deep breath before you speak, because you're using that action feeling to say what you want to say, but if you just stop and think a minute, you wouldn't say things that would you would react to things as fast that you would have time to think, well, how is this gonna affect me? How is this gonna affect somebody else?
I- i- isn't that treating your neighbor as you treat yourself? You know, you want the same kind of respect, um, and you must give that. Um, and, and, and those, and, and I'm glad you brought up the youth because, you know, um, sometimes our, our youth right now, in many cases, um, they have a different thought process because of their exposure or lack of exposure to those who supposed to represent this verse. So they might just be reacting off of what they've seen and heard and experienced all their life.
Right.
Which takes them further away from the word of God. So when they're not in the presence of someone who's modeling this verse, then their relationship, um, with the word. Find that another way. And if they feel emboldened by their communication and snapping back, uh, because if you're looking at, um, you know, TikTok videos and, and Facebook reels, you can see how, you know, putting somebody in place is the thing to do. Um, but this right here, um, speaks of a different way of how to deal with that situation, be more of a, a thermostat than, um, the person who, um, gets vengeance on somebody from their words and actions.
Amen.
I, I always equate things like this to, um, looking at what God has done and how he has blessed and taught us. Took a whole lot of patience with us. Um, things could have been started over and over again in the Bible, but he took patience. And he taught and led and gave guidance and direction and gave proverbs and, and people prophets, an opportunity to give warning before, um, a judgment was passed. So if we're doing anything like that, we should mimic God's way in Jesus' acts to show that we understand our Father. Thank you guys for that input. As we go to twenty nine, uh, the Lord is far from the wicked. But here's the prayers of the righteous, righteous. Uh, let, let's, let's talk about that one. W- w- we, we say that especially at the end of our Bible study sessions, we, you know, we, we know how important it is for that. That the, the prayer process to take place. And, and that's that communication that we have with God, communing with him with that sincere prayer and bringing people forth. And I really like first part that says, the Lord is far from the wicked. But he hears the prayer of the righteous. So what does that tell you when you see those words that way? When wicked is far from him, but he hears the prayers of the righteous, what does that mean distance wise when you look at that?
It makes you know who have access to, to him.
There you go. There you go.
And also who has a relationship with him? We don't have a relationship with him. Um, how is he gonna hear our word when we don't have that conversation back and forth with him? And what I'm getting at, the wicked, they don't know him, they don't want to know him, or they don't have that relationship, so. But God's here, the prayer of the righteous where they are in that relationship with him, they having that daily conversation with him, they reading the word. And that's what I get from that.
Amen. I like that. I like that. Anyone else like to add? So, so a question, because, um, wait, I'm sorry, anyone saying something? Um, the, in, it, it has a reference in my commentary about, um, Romans five and eight. It says, but God demonstrates his love, uh, towards us. In that while we were sinners, still sinners, Christ died for us.
Amen.
So when we see that, his love is there and he's willing to be with us. But when we start to do certain things to separate ourselves from, from God. And, 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 and that, that wickedness gets us far from God. I mean, it didn't say we're from God, it says far from God. And, and when we look at distance, that far part goes there, but in relation wise, uh, relationship wise, you can get to the point where you said, I'm done with you. And you can be right next to somebody and you don't, you don't do that, remember? You know, for four hundred years, they haven't heard from God. Wasn't that God wasn't around? You know, God was still there, but they just couldn't hear from him because of how they've done things. So that, that far from means, you know, you know, covering might be gone. You, you, I mean, all kinds of things can be not going your way because you have decided to turn away from God. And that can be done from those examples in the previous verses where it gives us by our actions, by the things we say, by the things we do, we in that category where we're seen as evil or wicked and those kind of things. But oh my goodness, when he says the prayers, but he hears the prayer of the righteous. Be able to do that, like Sister Shadana said, access, having access to the one who can bring you through. Wouldn't you want that to be your, your characteristic? That, you know, he hears your prayers? As Sister Vicky said, we, we, we've, we stayed in the word to stay close to God. Um, therefore we know how to approach him, how to talk with him. Um, how to ask for forgiveness, how to in, 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 when we're leaning on God, we're letting God, we're letting him know that we know he's the one who could bring us through. There's nothing that we can do on our own that gets us close to him is what we do in concert with God, where our heart is looking for God. Um, that he will give us, um, direction and guidance of where to go. And here goes Proverbs, that guidance is there for us. So, uh, this is phenomenal, yeah. Thank you guys for that one.
And I believe that he hears the prayer of the righteous because the righteous is saying what he, what he wants them to say. They are saying, you know, the will of the Lord. The righteous is saying exactly what God wants to say because what? They're one with him, they're one with him, so they're praying the right prayer. They're praying thine will be done on earth as it is in the kingdom. So when God hear his word, he answer his word. He and his word is one. So you know, he hear that prayer of the righteous. We don't just go to God and you know, and tell him all about this and tell him all about that, but we pray according to his will, not according to our will. And he hear the prayer of that righteous person.
Yes, yes, amen. It, it, it's, w- we see evidence in the Bible that those who have a significant job, um, that God placed them on. Um, their hearts are centered on God. Their hearts are there, so when they be, when, when you show that, that your heart is there and, and you're righteous, just the things that God puts or prepares you for, let's say that, prepares you for. You don't have to worry about those. Uh, Moses, look, Moses, you know, he had a lot of things going on, but God prepared him for what he had to do, gave him the tools and the, the support he needed to do the work that he had for him to do. Once we decide in our hearts, that's what we want from God, his will, he's gonna give you everything you need. Make that possible.
Amen.
Despite how it looks, despite how it looks, despite how, you know, what you see on TV, despite what you see, uh, in, in your, in your bank account, despite what you see in your relationships or your job status, or whatever that is. God would hear who you through.
Yes, he will. Yes, he will. He's very present helping the time of trouble and need. He's gonna be there.
Amen.
All right. Anything else before we go to the next couple of verses? All right.
It also talks about he hears the prayers of the righteous. Uh, James talks about, how can you come to God? James give you five ways, submit, submit to God, yield to his authority and will, commit your life to him and his control, and he will be willing to follow him. Resist the devil, don't allow Satan to entice you and attempt you. Wash your hands and purify your heart that is led to a pure life. Be cleansed from sin, replacing your desires to sin with your desires to experience God's purity. Grieve and mourn and wait and cereal, sars for your sin. Don't be afraid to express deep heartfelt sorrow for what you have done. Humble yourself before the Lord and he will lift you up.
Amen. Amen, amen.
So this has to be submissive.
Amen.
I'll commit.
Amen. Amen. Well, thank you for that, Elder.
Yes, sir.
It's right on time. All right. Okay, so, so, uh, question so far, um, have you guys seen these verses working in your life? Um, this year? Have you seen, I mean, sometimes when you see these words, you, you're like, oh, okay. I see how this is materializing in my life. Have you had that aha moment lately?
Amen, yes.
All right. All right, so, uh, let's, let's see if we can go ahead and read the next three verses. Um, can someone read verse, uh, thirty through thirty two?
A cheerful look brings joy to the heart and a good news gives health to the bones. He who listens to life gives rebuke, will be a home amongst the wise. He who ignores discipline despises himself, but who, so ever he's correction gains understanding.
All right, so what do you guys say about these verses? There's a lot there.
I see a lot in it because, uh, the, even the way it's sounding is in the reading is letting us know that if we don't, if we, if we heard the word and ignore the word and not taking it in, that we are, we not, uh, not being obedient because we not, we not in, into letting God fill us up with what he will need us to be filled up with. And we not being obedient because we not being concerned or listening and taking in the word that we given. It's open up because it's right now, even the word that we heard and even though when the Holy Spirit come in and teach us the right way to do things and the right way to receive stuff as that things happen around us and we begin to God's word. Then God's word opened up in us and let us see that God is still lighting up thing for us to understand. And we have to be able to acknowledge that and, and get understanding of his word, but get understanding of what he trying to show us too.
Thank you for that. Any, anyone else like to share? Cause, cause that understanding that talking about, like in the first verse of thirty says, like I said, the light of the eyes rejoices the heart. And a good report makes bones healthy, make the bones healthy.
Amen.
Have, have you ever seen somebody and you, you looked at their eyes and said, man, are you okay? Um, you must be going through something or, you know, or you see that someone who, who's always cheery and, and happy and, you know, just, you know, it just warms you to see them. But sometimes when you look at someone's hearts, um, in their eyes, it's like, you know, something's wrong. It, it, it seems like, uh, in the commentary tells me that, you know, it says this, the eyes are sometimes like a lamp to the whole body. When the eyes are full of light, it brings happiness and contentment in the heart. So you, you, you know, that's when you realize what your relationship is, you realize that God has you covered. So no matter what's going on in that environment, you're not looking like the environment.
Amen.
Like the one who's in control of the environment.
Oh, yeah. But, but Mr. Mr. I, I like to say this because even though as you talk about it, you know, the Holy Spirit, you have the Holy Spirit dwell within you. Uh, even with what you just said, it's open up and make you realize that deep down in your heart that, you know, the glow written was in your heart. If you got the goodness in your heart and you feel rejoicing good, it gonna come and you got seeing your eyes. That's just like anybody that's down within their heart and not got no, or got stuff in their heart, their holy and not really giving it up to God and feel the joy of God coming into their hearts. And, and, and into their spirit to make them rejoice and even making them feel better so that they can have, because that's just like your body of your life in it. Body is dead and we got a dead spirit in it, that dead spirit ain't got no life in it. Then we gonna, we gonna, we gonna be burdened down, we gonna pull, be pulled down to a part that we not even gonna have a life in us for us, so about somebody else to see. But then when you begin to get that life back in you, that word that go deep down in that spirit and begin to make you build back up your, build you back up, but build you up with God love, God peace, God joy, God, uh, 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 belief, the belief that you got. It always brings things up, tell you tell, and your jo- your heart begin to feel with joy. It brings it up through your eyes because the people see that joy of life in you. So that makes it good, it good to say that God, if we God live within you, your life and give you life, the rejoice of life in you, you can see and you can feel, and then you able to share with your fellow man, your, your sister, brother, that God still live, but God live in you. And, 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 and that makes you even look at yourself and correct, and you realize that God is dealing with you more in life. In life, and I feel, today I feel like God is giving me even more than ever. Because a lot of things fall upon me sometime and I got, and it go, make me go right back to God in charge. He got everything in him.
Amen.
So, so don't bother wondering, and the good thing that just lets me bring it out tonight too, because. If you always listen at what God's word say and listen at what it say. And let it manifest in you, your light, where the little dead spot may be in you, it begin to get life back. Because God.
Amen.
God word. And I thank God for, you know, I just thank God for everything.
Amen.
Hallelujah. Lord, hallelujah.
That thirty-one, uh, it says, listen to good advice if you want to live well and arm. Guess amongst. The, uh, it says here, the ear that hears the rebukes of life, not every ear will listen to correction. But there is a blessing to those that do. Also, life has its own rebukes for those who have the ear to hear. And general life rewards wisdom and rebukes folly. Hear the rebukes of life that receive it gratefully and obeys it. Advice is for them that will take it. So says one of our own proverbs, and the meaning here is nearly the same. The way we receive a rebuke tests is our character. It reviews it. We possess the grace of humility, sincerity, and self-knowledge. So you, 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 you got, you got to, if you review. Then that tests is your character in Christ. If we're, if we supposed to be in Christ and with Christ life. We can receive a rebuke and not take it to heart, you know what I'm saying? I think that builds our character in him.
Yes.
By being an opening rebuke. Cause everybody ain't gonna take no rebuke, first thing I think people gonna do. And uh, be grudgy-hearted, gonna come back with something. But God, we, we have to build our character, we, we have to know who we, who we serving. And you know, God uh. Is our master, so that's what we trying to do.
And I believe that a lot of this, we got to walk by faith, it's not by a natural feeling, you know. It's that a cheerful look brings joy to the heart and good news make for good health. And a lot of times, you, you might not, you know, you might not feel cheerful. But you got, you know, you have faith in God. You know, when you have faith in God, then you automatically cheerful. That's a part of uh, of who you are because you're walking by faith and not by sight. You know, and how you feel, and we can't, you know, we can't be a feely, feely church. We got, and we got to walk in the spirit, then those that walk in the spirit, we are the sons of God. So a lot of times it ain't gonna be how you feel, you know, is what he says. That's what we got to take to heart, what the word of God say, what, what is he saying? That's what we take to heart, and that's what we do. You know, because a lot of times, you know, we walking in the flesh, we'll just give up. But we got to walk in faith and walk in the spirit.
Um, and, and I, I thank you for sharing that, um, cause that rebuke part is, is, is tough for people.
Yes, it is.
It's tough because again, where you were raised and your interpretation of the word. And who's, who's this person to rebuke me?
That's right.
They're not Christ, they're not God. Who, who are they, you know? Um, I, I, I do wanna back up a minute to verse thirty real quick, that the. Um, second part of that verse, it says, when a good report makes the bones healthy. And, and remember the report that we're talking about, the good news, the good report. Is, is that of, you know, what God did in Jesus Christ to demonstrate his love for us. Rescue us. That's, that's the good, that's the good report.
Yes.
Report, a lot of people might look at this and that prosperity gospel says, a good report makes you, your bones healthy. You know, yeah, good report, the doctor said you're okay, this, that, and so on and so forth, but the good report. That gives you the base to know that all the other things you're going through will be, will be okay. Is that Christ died for. God loved us, so he gave us Christ. So back to uh, uh Sister Garnell, when she was sharing that joy and that feeling, when you know. What God did for you, when you know and believe in that. That lets you know that you, you are special to him. Every single one of us are special to him because of that, and that should let you shine, even in your worst day. It'll let you know that you can take rebuke. You can't get that good report, any other report you get, you're gonna take it with a frowned face. And that is another, um, you know, dampened situation on you, that someone thinks you're not. You know, worthy or whatever that situation is, and your reaction to that will be confrontational. It will be, you know, separation, it will be acting out, it will be those wicked ways.
Amen.
And that's where we gotta be careful because you'll be seen as unwise, you'll be here, you'll be seen as someone who doesn't want to hear. So how can God give you your blessings? If you're not gonna listen to the people he gonna send to you.
That's right.
Amen. And I believe too, when, when you're getting uh constructive criticism. That person have to love you, you know? They have to love you to give, you can't hate a person. You know, and you're trying to give them constructive criticism. This is where love come in at. You know, when you love a person, and you know that person is going the wrong way or got the wrong spirit. You know, you're going to, you're gonna love them. You know, because love look beyond all the fault, and love does what? It sees the need of the individual. So when, uh, you know, sometime our pastor have to correct us. And they only doing that because they love you. You know, and they want you to be the best that you can be. You know, so you can carry out their assignment that God has placed on your life. And I learned that the hard way. You know, cause I was a little hard rock Charlie, okay? And I just broke my mind, you know, that's not the way of God. Not the way of God, and sometime your leaders see what, what God have in you. And how God wanna bring you out, you know, and they will tell you sometime. And sometime it don't sound good, you know, and sometime it makes you mad.
Right.
Makes you mad and make you wanna blow up and you wanna stalk back and all of that. You know, when you like that, you can't learn, you can't, you know, be prosperous, you can't. Go forth in what God will have you to go forth in. So when that, when that come, we have to listen to God, ma- God is speaking through the man or the woman of God. We have to hear God, look beyond that flesh. Don't look at the flesh, look at God, and what, what God wanna do in our lives. And some people can't take that. They can't take it, you know, that's why we have to go, we got to fast, cause our flesh is in charge. You know, when you fast, you know, then you'll, you'll, you, you suppress the, the flesh. You know, because sometime our flesh is, you know, leading and guiding us. But we got to walk in the spirit, we got to put that thing on the altar, we got to kill it. You know, if we wanna be uh successful in what God has called us to do. So we can't be listening to all that other stuff, you know, and think that we know it all, we don't know it all. That's why God got leaders to teach us. You know, we got to be teachable. And you can't sit in church and you got your arms all fold up and your mouth poke out and. The word, the rich word. The word that can change your life is coming. And you shut down, and when you shut down the word, the word cannot enter in. The word have to have access to your heart. If you shut it down, it's not gonna come, it's not gonna do you any good, it's just like words on a page. But it won't be beneficial to you, until you accept what God is saying. Didn't God do it to Peter? Didn't he do it to Paul? Those men were powerful men.
Yes.
Cause they took in that, that, um, that criticism, constructive criticism.
Yes. Uh David as well, and, and, and all of those in the Bible, it, it does that. And, and, and that's to, and I'm glad you brought that up because in, in Sunday School, we've been, we're in a series where. Um, it, it talks about how God was setting the, the commandments and giving instructions of how. He's to be approached.
Amen.
I mean, that goes there for him. So tho- those are guidelines of how you're supposed to come to him, but. Even with that, the grace and mercy has been shown through God because they got to a point where they could have been destroyed. They could have been wiped out, but because Moses went to him and, and, and spoke on their behalf and pleaded. For, for them, they were able to uh continue to receive his, his blessing. So when we see how in the Old Testament and how these are coming up to say. We, we have access to God right now through his holy, that's been left to us.
Amen.
But he is no, he is no less powerful. Than he was when he was speaking in the Old Testament. Now, that is still the God today that's with us. And he has requirements that we need to follow, just cause we have freedoms and access to things. That others may not have back then, um, especially the word that's given and, and. And the pastors and the leaders that's given to us and, 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 and just the grace and mercy that showed to us every day. Doesn't mean that we can step out on our own away from God. So this, this is profound because, um, one thing I want to read this, it says. The way we receive a rebuke test our character. It reveals if we possess the graces of humility. And self-knowledge.
Yes. Be teachable.
Have you teach you, that's right.
Amen.
Alright, eh, uh, uh, listen, um, if, if we would have heard that. At a different stage in our life, um. I, I, I think I would have been better off today. I, I made some mistakes that.
Oh, yeah.
Because this word wasn't speaking to me like it is today. Um, I, I think I would have, you know, you know. Help myself not go through so many different things. Uh, thank God for this word today, so I can share with those who need to know, um, as well as my children. So, alright.
I was just gonna say to that last thing you said about, um, being teach, teachable. I remember uh being in school and report cards would come out. And it would let me, my teacher, he, they sorry, and it's. But we rarely took accountability and was like, how much of it is the teacher and how much of it is? Us coming into the classroom and being ready to learn. Um, and that just kinda stood out, cause now in adulthood, going into spaces, you know, anything going in the workplace or. Service, oh, I didn't get anything out of service, man, the praise worship team was just off, pastor didn't know what he was talking about. Everybody's spirit was just. But how much of it was me not coming in there ready to worship and ready to learn and ready to be teachable? You know, um, it is, that verse just, um, seems to speak to accountability.
Amen. Amen.
That's the freedom that we have. We, we ask for it. We ask for that freedom, um, but that freedom comes with that responsibility to show. That, um, we know that, we know what to do with that freedom. And, and, and that is, um, being self-confident and self, um, aware of. What we're not doing. And be able to share that so others can be better than what they're doing. Um, it, it all, it always stops, start, and this is the, this is the interesting aspect with that. To share those things and, and be willing to receive that correction. Shows that you're willing to justify your faults. You're willing to, to go through, if people wanna call it humiliation, or whatever it is. You're willing to go through that so others can learn. Isn't that what Christ did for us?
Amen.
Didn't Christ go through some things that were, were unjust? Just so he, he can rescue us? But also teach that these things we're gonna have to face as well when we take up the cross. At some point in time, we gotta get real with, you know, the rebuke or. The, 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 the trials and tribulations that are gonna come forth. Because we know our Father is gonna get us through.
That's right.
Our continents, I mean, how else can you take those many whips without a mumbling word? And, and that, that just shows us that we can bear whatever comes to us. If we're connected, if we keep our relationship, is when we don't, we're so far away from them. That everything feels like a, a tremendous burden that we can't carry. And that's when we get further away from God, that is, is the truth.
Amen.
Amen. Alright, alright, anyone else wanna add something before we read the last two? Alright, let's go to, can someone read verses thirty-two and thirty-three?
If you reject discipline, you only harm yourself. This is the international, um. Yeah. No, life application bottom, I'm sorry. If you reject discipline, you only harm yourself. But if you listen to correction, you grow in understanding, and that is so plain, right there.
That's plain.
Fear, the fear of the Lord teaches wisdom. Humility precedes honor. You know, a lot of times we don't have to go, we don't have to go into what we think. Cause the Holy Spirit is just making this plain. If you reject discipline, you only harm yourself.
Wow, that's it.
You know, that's powerful right there. And a lot of times we don't want to take discipline, cause we think we grown. We as Matthew eighteen and, and thirteen says that what, we got to come as what, a little child. Alright? If you wanna enter into the kingdom of God, you have to be like a little child. Okay? You can't be a grown up, you know, and you telling everybody what to do. You know, we got to be like that child, humble. And you know, a lot of times a little child is humble and they believe what, what you say. You know, you discipling them. And they get theirself back in, in order. You know, but we as, as grown people, a lot of times, we reject that discipline. So we can't reject discipline, cause it's coming to help us.
That's right.
Coming to help us, you know, everything, sometime we look at it as bad, but it's not bad. God love you and he know what it takes to make you to be that warrior, to be that soldier. To be whatever he has called you to be, you might be a teacher or pastor or apostle. You know, and it's gonna take discipline, cause we don't know the method of the kingdom.
That's right.
He's teaching us, he's teaching us. So you know, if you don't take discipline, you're only harming yourself. You're not harming nobody else, and you can't blame nobody else, blame you, the blame is you. Saying like Michael Jackson said, look at the man in the mirror.
I like that. That's right.
We have to look at the madness in the mirror, and the mirror is, your reflection is in the mirror, so. You know, so we just have to accept what God has given us. He love us so much, he wanna empower us so much, he don't. He don't just want us to be on, um, the surface. He wanna take us out into the deep. You know, because there's some people that's gonna come in our lives and we got the, we got to know more than A, B, C, okay? We got the, where, where's the big catch? The big catch is where? In the deep. It's not on the shallow waters. So we can't be shallow, you know? Because when you don't receive discipline and you can see that in your family, you can see that in your child, you can see that in our world today. You know, so we have to, uh, accept discipline. Because when you rejecting, you only harm yourself and that is so, so plain right there, you know? And we have to take this on. God is speaking to us. Take these things on. Not just being a hearer, not just participating in the discussion, but hey, are you going to re, uh, uh, still reject discipline? You know now that if you do it, you harming yourself.
That's right.
But if you listen to correction, God will correct us. And a lot of times we don't wanna be corrected. You'll grow in understanding. And he said, "Out of all you're getting, get understanding what I want you to do."
And this backs you up sister. "He who disdains instruction despises his own soul." "To refuse wisdom and instruction that comes from wisdom is to hate one own soul." "Those who reject wisdom hurt many people, but most of all themselves."
That's right.
"Who he's rebuked gets understanding." "To hear and heed rebuke is to get and grow in wisdom."
Amen.
Understanding, receiving rebuke is rarely pleasant, but it's worth it for who, for wisdom it brings.
Amen.
We, we need to, um, definitely understand that when we're talking about the rebuke and being disciplined and stuff, that's God's words and not our own selfish motives. And so when we're out there with people, because I, I can remember a point in time where, um, in my earlier walk, someone would say, "Well, God told me to say da, 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 da." Well, little do you know that I have a active life and I be in the Word and I study the Word. And the same way God speaks to you, he can speak to me as well. And I understand that, um, when it comes to rebuke and people have to be careful and make sure it's not self. Right. Their own selfish, selfishness that's trying to rebuke something that they don't like. And it has to stay within the lines, the guidelines of what the Word says. So I, I had to, um, I had to learn to allow people to speak. And then in return, say, you know, I really appreciate what you just said. And however, the same God that, that put that in your spirit, if that was for me, my spirit would have been confirmed and I would have been like, Lord, thank you for that. Because there were some sense, some, some instance that, you know, I got it, you know, and it was, it was, it was beautiful because I was already in it studying in the Word and it was just confirmation that, okay Vanessa, this is where you need to go. But I, I just really don't want people to get lost in, in the Word. Know, know that, that the instructions, the discipline, the rebuke comes from God's Word. It comes from God's Word. So you be careful when people talking about they openly rebuking you. You got to be in the Word. You got to study so that when you hear God's Word, that you know that's God speaking. Because there's gonna be other spirits that's gonna come after you and they're gonna try to come in the form of godliness and ain't gonna be nothing there, bit of God in them. So for, 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 for those of us that, you know, tr- trying to, um, dissect the Word, you, you have, there's a spiritual side of it that we sometimes don't see. So in order to see that, just make sure you stay in the Word so that when, when there is a time to be redirected gently and out of love, you will say, okay, that lines up with God's Word and thank you for that. I appreciate that, but you got to be in the Word to be able to, to see that. If not, you gonna get lashed out on.
Amen.
Amen.
So we just got to be, we have to be careful in that. We do have to stay in the Word so that we'll know that, hey, you know, the ears that hears the rebuke of life will abide among the wise. Hey, that's the Word.
Man, amen. I agree.
Amen.
And I'm glad you shared that because, I mean, even as you were sha- sharing that, you were in again Proverbs twenty-eight, the heart of righteous, study how to answer. So as
Wow.
We were sharing that you're studying God's Word. When you study God's Word, you will have that discernment that when someone does come to you, you know it's the Word of God. It, you know those things that she was saying as sister, um, Vanessa was sha- sharing is that it's gonna speak to you because you've been in the same Word. Uh, and a lot of times when you're in the Word, you're gonna realize that. But you will know how to answer someone who's not in the Word, who's just in their feelings. Um, because you're gonna answer the way that your God wants you to answer because you've been studying the Word. You've been able to say that. You've been able to teach them. Um, how that, that, that teachable moment that they meant for you was something that God is gonna use to teach to them.
Amen.
And that's, and that's how, you know, understanding and receiving God's Word, in God's Word allows you to understand when God's people in your presence. Cause they're sent to be by God. They're sent to give you those things. And then I want to share on that, that verse when Elder Soraya was reading, that "He who disdains instructions despises his own soul."
Hmm.
A lot of times when, and, 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 and I'm just saying this because of, you know, I know what I'm talking about on this one. If, a lot of times when you are rebuked and you receive that re- that rebuke, um, and this is contrary to what, um, Sister Vanessa was sharing. Sometimes in my previous walk, I looked at the person and said, "Who are they?" I was looking for physical things to discount how and why they should be talking to me that way.
That's right.
You know, I had to put a label on them. I had to de- to, to demote their godly presence or their, 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 their relationship in my mind to say they shouldn't be saying this to me because, you know, they do this or they do that.
Mm-hmm.
When, when I start responding that way,
Mm-hmm.
in that flesh way to think about, I was far removed from the Word. Far removed from what they were saying, far removed from that because I had to discount, I had to shut down the impact of that rebuking, how it did me.
Hmm.
And, and, and that's, and that's where I understood that, okay, what they were saying, I was just trying to hide from it. I was, I didn't wanna own up to it. I didn't wanna do that. So yeah, you know, um, God's watching and I realized that. You know what I'm saying? So those are true, those are two inf- um, instances where you can see that, yeah, one, it wasn't of God, the other time, uh, it was of God. And I didn't still accept it. I wanted to change that by making that person less to me. So I can ignore God's Word.
Uh, is that like saying sometimes somebody else, you sow a seed elder and somebody else have to come by and water it times because you refusing or rebuking, refusing? Is that?
Uh, uh, to me, that says, that's God's grace and mercy.
I got you.
Cause you're, you're, you're right. I, 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 you know, the second time around, I got it.
Right.
Um, and thank God for giving me another chance to get it.
Right.
Cause I could have done, I could have done something where I wouldn't have a second chance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and, and you're right. Um, God loves us. He's gonna still be there for us and he showed us in the Old Testament that, that he'll do that.
Mm-hmm.
I, I really do wanna back up what Sister Vanessa said is we have to be, we have to be in this Word. We have to stay in this Word to understand when is God talking or the world talking?
Amen.
And to talk about that last verse, "The fear of the Lord is the instruction of wisdom."
Hmm.
For honor is humility.
Oh, my God.
So do you see how important it is to fear the Lord? Um, and, and, and not, and, and when you're saying you're fit, so here's a question. When you fear something, what do you do around it?
Stay away from it. Stay away from it.
You, you, you give it some kinda importance, right?
Right. Respect.
If you say you're, you're afraid of snakes, you don't go around them. You study, you watch where they are. So you don't step on them. You, you put some focus on that thing that you fear. And, and, and you learn about it. You know when snakes are coming out. You know where they might hide or where they might be. I mean, we, we might know snakes more than we know God. Uh, um, well, um, let me not say that. But, but, but we do those things that we think are gonna harm us. We understand how they move, where they might be, so we don't get harmed. But when we understand who God is and the power of God, um, the blessings and the corrections and everything else that go with them, that fearing is giving him the reverence, the just do that he
Absolutely.
should have. And when we do that, we need to know all parts of them so we don't receive that, that punishment. But we can get the blessings.
Hmm.
But it's funny how we want, we will fear and know everything about these things that might harm us. But we know less about the one who will give us all.
Amen.
Uh, and you know what Vanessa was talking about. I think that it said, "If you're righteous, if you're righteous, you weigh their answer." The wicked don't weigh to speak because they don't care about the effects of their words. It is important to have something to say. But it's equally important to weigh it first. Do you carefully plan your words or do you pour out your thoughts without concern of the impact? So what you say has a big impact. It can hurt somebody. It could be damaging. So you need to be righteous before you get out there and say something.
Amen. Thank you.
Amen.
So, so that big part of humility, um, that comes before honor, you know? Um, once you're, you're humble, um,
Yes.
people respect you. You know, people go to you. People, um, they, they seem to go to you because they, they, they wanna see how you answer. They wanna see how, what, they wanna hear what you have to say because it's something about you that's not, um, arrogant or egotistical. So they, they, they wanna hear something from you because they're willing to hear from you. Um, and again, I equate that to Christ. When all those went around them, he, uh, he, he delivered. He spoke, he healed. Uh, he didn't do it with a, a, um, a band and saying, "Here I am," or throwing, you know, money out there to the crowd. He just gave them what they need. Uh, healed them, touched them, presence.
Right.
He was approachable. We have to be approachable.
Absolutely right.
Well, we don't wanna take you too far over, um, the lesson today, at the time today. We wanna be mindful of everyone and thank you guys for being here. Do we have any last comments or input before we close out? Anything burning in you that you have to get out so we can hear that tonight?
I just wanna say, you know, when we go before our God, we have to reverence him, you know? We got to reverence him and respect him. We just don't go into his presence any kind of way. You know, you have to, you have to, you know, go in and you go in with an open heart and an open mind that the Holy Spirit will speak to you. You know, while you in the presence of God. And we have to realize that he is a king. He is our King. He's our Savior. You know, and we got to, we got to honor him and cherish him and love him. And our God love praises. He said, "When praises go up, the blessings come down." So when we go in the very presence of God, we have to be careful how we go in. You know, we can't go in with animosity in our hearts. You know, we mumbling and we grumbling. You know, we have to set a standard when we go into the presence of God. Because he is God. He is the ruler of everything. He is the almighty God and we have to know that. You know, and it's some things you can't even say in his presence.
That's right.
You know, so we just have to be familiar with who God is. And he wants us to be familiar and know what he love and what he rejects.
Thank you.
You know, so I just thank the Lord for Proverbs teaching me a lot of things. You know, sometime you being the Lord a long time and you go over these things, but sometime you got to go back. You got to go back and you got to get a new perceptive of what God is saying, you know, to us. So I just thank the Lord for, um, the book of Proverbs. Thank God for the teacher tonight. Everyone that was on, I just thank the Lord. God is good.
All in ten. Well, anyone else? Thank you for that, Dennis.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, with, with that being said, um, we're gonna open up the, the call for, for prayer. Um, we're gonna, um, put folks in a prayer circle, um, because we're, uh, back to that verse that says the prayer, um, he hears the prayers of the righteous.
Yeah.
And we're trying to study to be righteous. Uh, so let's go ahead and, and bring, um, petitions to the Lord so we can, um, cover them in prayer.
We're praying for pastor and his safe tra- travels and bring us back safe and give him strength that he can endure the sorrow that he's going through other days.
That just for guys to let you know that, um, pastors, um, in, um, California, uh, his stepfather passed away, so they're burying him.
Yes.
Burials is, is this weekend. Um, so, um, yeah, there, there's services happening. So we wanna keep them in prayer.
Um, and if I could just say, thank you to everyone for your thoughts and prayers and again for the beautiful, um, plant, the oak lily. And thank you for praise of safety and just, um, being mindful of our family during this time. Thank you so much. Your love.
Amen. Amen. You know we care.
Yes. All right, anyone else for prayer?
Yes. Pray for, um, Michelle Skipper and Fred for healing. And Stan for healing.
Put Ella Williams in the prayer circle, please.
I'd like to request prayer for everybody. I'd like to request prayer for all those that's in the hospital that's going through with surgery and stuff for healing. Also Ms. Carol and her. And also all the ones that's battling with death in the family, the real family. And also put all those that's, that, that, that's going through with different things in their minds and their hearts. And even dealing with things in high places, you know? Or put all them in the, put all leadership in the prayer circle. And put everybody that's going forth through this world to, to, to be able to not look at all this stuff in the world, but look at God even more. not look at all this stuff in the world, but look at God even more. Because he the one that see everything, he already knows. He already done what he gonna do. It's just us gotta be in, in place so we can receive.
Amen.
Yeah. So we just, you know, just pray everybody in the prayer, all over the world, and the teachers and the children in the school. And all no more tracks, everything, just put it up in God's hands and not.
I also wanna put Don and Scott in the prayer circle tonight, elder.
On the wildfires that's in Sacramento, I pray that God, you know, put them out and just do all, all he can do.
Amen.
Anyone else?
I wanna put, um, Aunt Garnell in, in the circle. Her heart is so pure and she's just always loving and covering everybody. When, when, we're not even thinking about it, you know? And just her continued strength.
Yeah.
And just her endurance, just, just all over the place, but she still finds time to bring everybody else up. You know, just a servant heart. So I really wanna put her in the prayer circle, circle because we do love you. But you, you're just always holding it down for everybody. It's like the backbone to see the branch and just absolutely wanna put her in the prayer circle.
Amen.
Thank God for all of y'all.
And I said, I said the wildfires in Sacramento on, that's wild. We can say the wildfires everywhere because they starting to break out, so wildfires everywhere.
I wanna put, uh, Duty in and his mother who's, um, going through a situation, um, get the family strength and, uh, courage to, uh, get through.
Anyone else? Um, I, I like to put, um, our family in the prayer circle. Um, also our, our, our youth in the prayer circle. Um, with everything going on in the world today, um, there gonna be some decisions that affect them directly. And I wanna put them in prayer circle for protection, understanding, guidance and wisdom to respond and react. Uh, but also for our family for, um, direction in in the path we should take for endeavors, uh, you know, for our family's success, but also for, um, our spiritual, um, our spiritual enrichment. I think that's maybe more so in ever right now so we can deal with things that we're gonna be faced with as.
Hello Venz, I'm asking for continuing prayer for healing, covering for my family. Um, covering for the, our church family and our nation.
Um, I wanna, um, your face report, my board member was waiting on, um, zone transplant.
Amen. Any other prayer requests?
Um, I'd like to request prayer for myself for continued healing and peace and, um, strength and direction.
I also like to pray for Corrilla and her situation into the prayer circle to keep her lifted up. And, and the pro- prayer circle.
And all the brothers with the babies.
Alright. Um, there's no others, we had voted prayer. Elder Soror, do you want to pray us? Um, have a prayer covering over those petitions?
Sure. Bye. Heavenly Father, first of all, we wanna say thank you. Thank you for your loving kindness, Father. Thank you for who you are. Thank you for another chance to serve, Father. Thank you for all your kind blessings, Father. Father, we thank you for a nice service tonight. All that particip- participated, all the comments, Father. Thank you for that. Now heavenly Father, we ask that you bless each and everyone on the call.
Yes, Lord.
Father, we ask that you bless the petition. You know all about the petition that you made each and every one of us.
Yes, Father.
You know from the hairs on our head to the bottom of our feet. And we say thank you for an opportunity to serve you. Thank you for all the kind blessings, Father. Thank you for restoring us, Father. Thank you for life, health and strength. Now heavenly Father, we ask that you restore our teacher, Lord. Restore each and everyone on the call, Father. Father, we ask that you bless our pastor. If he's saved, trip back home to his saints, Father. Father, we ask that to restore him, Father. We ask that you build him up from the crown of his head to the sole of his feet. Father, thank you. We ask that, we thank you for this service tonight. And we thank you for each and everyone on the call.
Yes, Lord.
In Jesus' name we pray. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Father. Hallelujah.
And thank you guys for joining tonight. Um, please remember to text somebody so they can receive some of this too next week. Uh, we would love to see you at, at church on Sunday or online, however you can get there. We'd love to see you. Thank you guys, y'all have a blessed night. Love you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good luck.
Good night.